One member absent, and we are going to do number, item number four first, and Mr. Skinner will bring us up to date on this Copperleaf FDP.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, case number FDP 18 dash, sorry, no Skinner for the planning division. Case number FDP 18-002, the partnership at Copperleaf is decided. They want to take a look at a couple of options with it. So I'm withdrawing this from the agenda tonight. We will repost, renotice, and come back to appear hopefully on August 7th. But we need it in the record that we're pulling it. So that's me, all I'm gonna do tonight, put it in the record. Happy to answer any, actually, no, I don't think I can take any questions on this in terms of the application itself, but I'll see you in three weeks with this.
Okay, it will come back in the same form.
Yep, absolutely, believe so. There may be minor changes to lot lines in it, is essentially what's being discussed.
Okay, thank you. So, item number two will become number one, and item number two is case number L17-008. No, I'm wrong. Item number one is still item number one, case number P17-019, Dove Valley Business Park, number 01, Elevations Volleyball SVP, and Molly O'Kild Larson will present for the county.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Molly O'Kild Larson, Senior Planner with the Public Works Department. The county attorney has reviewed the public notice and has determined that the applicant has met all of the public notice requirements, thereby establishing jurisdiction. What's before you this evening is a specific development plan that proposes approximately 28,000 square feet of a private volleyball training and coaching facility with five courts, and it's located on Lot 1 of the Dove Valley Business Airpark subdivision. The facility will have training during the week and Saturdays, and tournaments on Sundays. The applicant is proposing 121 parking spaces on-site, and 100 off-site parking spaces will be located right next door and to the west of the facility on the Rappahoe County Library property. The applicant has secured a parking agreement with the library district. The application is also within Centennial Airport Environments Planning Area, which is also known as CAPA. This application does apply with the CAPA's design requirements by addressing all four sides of the building, accented entrance, provides horizontal and vertical articulation on the building. Staff recommends these, this application be approved based on the findings in the staff report, and the applicant is here tonight to do a presentation, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from Molly?
Okay, I'll turn it over to, I'll turn it over to the applicant, thank you.
You'll hear from the applicant, thank you.
Good evening. So, to put together a little presentation, just give you a snapshot of who we are. It's the first time doing something like this, so we're not developers, we're just small business owners. So I hope what I put in here is helpful. So introductions, I'm Matt Burrell, one of the owners and executive director. This is Rob Graham, and this is Kevin Snyder, so we're partners in the business, and Bob Smith is our owner's rep and project manager. So we're a youth volleyball team. We serve kids ages, boys and girls ages 8 to 18. Our history on this is, the three of us were the head coaches at Ponro, well, Rob was the head coach, and Kevin and I were the assistant varsity coaches at Ponrosa High School. I actually grew up, went to Ponrosa as well. And so we were there 16 years, and we always talked about forming a club. And so we, back in 2012, we did it, because we saw a need for better training, because kids were coming to us not properly trained in the high school environment, so we're like, we think we can do a better job, so we started our club. And the why is, these core principles here is, you know, we believe in process over outcome as far as training, you know, teaching kids master the fundamentals rather than just focusing on the win at the end. We're passionate about coaching kids, like I said, you know, between us, I don't know how many years of experience we have, 60 or more years of coaching experience. We wanted to be the model of how youth sports can and should be, and we created a family culture to be proud of in our club, and why we all play sports, is athletics, of course. Next slide. So our business continued, basically what we do is we have a year-round developmental youth league from ages 8 to 15. They run about every six weeks, and we have four divisions in each of those six weeks. So there's a total of six leagues throughout the year, and on average, each league session each six weeks, we've got about 300 kids. We also have a competitive juniors level teams, where these are kids that want to play at the higher level, they want to play in college and stuff like that. And that season's November through April, we've got 16 girls teams from ages 12 to 18, and four boys teams ages 12 to 18. And I don't know if you're aware or not, but the boys are getting set to hopefully become sanctioned here, probably in 2020 through high school. So that, well, that'll probably explode in that area as well. We also just run, you know, monthly clinics and various skill camps through our facility. So it's just a brief snapshot. Speaking of our boys, they made Colorado history, they finished 15th in the nation. There it goes. Yeah, this is, I just threw that out there. Some props. Our growth, so we started this club back in 2012, and just to give you a snapshot of our growth in gross revenue, we've been in the black ever since. I mean, there's a demand for a good youth sports training, and, you know, we're on track this year to 1.3, 1.4 million. So we're pretty proud of the, our success in our business. Let's see, just to give you more of our history of our growth, back in 2012 through 2013, we subleased a shared space with another company. That's when we, where we launched it. I don't know, it's over in Inverness. We had four courts at that time. 2014, we grew so much, we moved out. We moved over to the Concord Business Park over here by American Furniture Warehouse, and leased our own space, 18,000 square foot warehouse, and that gave us the ability to have five courts. And we're, we're still growing, so now, we knew we would, so back in 2012, we, we started this dream of, of having our own facility, so we feel this is our next step, is moving to that. And this is just some snapshots of our current warehouse space, you can kind of see, we've got five courts in there, but they're kind of tight, it's maybe six to eight feet between courts, but, you know, it's, it's worked for us. But we're looking for, towards our future, and that is developing our own, our own building. So the site is over on, next to the Rappahoe County Library Admin Building, on Broncos Parkway. And, I don't know, Bob, if you want to talk about any of this sort of stuff, but here's this kind of a...
Yeah, I'm Bob Smith, I'm their only rep, project manager. I've known these guys for almost, I've, I've known Elevations Volleyballs since they started. My daughter played for them in their inaugural season, when they opened, and at that time is when they started talking about their own facility, because they knew it was going to grow, so I've been heavily involved with this and with them for over six years, going through the planning and getting it to this point. This basically is the site plan itself, it was a very challenging site to lay out a building. We had different kinds of transitions of setting up a building at an angle, and this is what we came up with, the best way for, to accommodate the parking and the size of the building itself. It'll have seven volleyball courts in it, or six volleyball courts in it. Phelps Engineering is the one that did the layout. So here, this is the floor plan, basic floor plan. It's 31,000 square feet. The court, court area and first floor area is 28,000. There is a mezzanine, which has 3,000 square feet, which will be used pretty much just for storage area right now. The other facility that they were in, they moved into, and they actually upgraded the facility to provide them, they paid for the restroom upgrade for it to make it accommodatable for these volleyball, for volleyball. If you've ever been to these volleyball tournaments, and I've been to a lot of them, quite a bit of them, one of the biggest things is restrooms. So, so we had to make sure that we had enough restrooms in here for men and women, and there's mostly women that are at these, at these events, because on the Sundays, it's club volleyball, but there will be men now also, with the expansion and the growth of men's volleyball. So that's pretty much the way it lays out. It's, it's a pre-engineered metal building, pretty much. I'm going to go to the next one. So it was designed by Farnsworth Group, it's a pre-engineered metal building. It does have some masonry, about 14-foot split face block masonry, there'll be there, metal panels. This is just the concept, so it didn't print out as bright color-wise, but we have not finalized the colors yet, but we will do that, you know, once we're done through this process. Let's see, next one. This is essentially the signage, this is the schematic design for the signage that would go on the front of the building and possibly the sides, basically, for that. Advertising Elevations Volleyball, this is their logo, which they use at their other facility right now. That's it. Yeah. So, that's about it. Like I said, I've been involved, I've known them for quite a while, and when they talk about process to outcome, my daughter played for them for two years, and the outcome I've got is she plays college volleyball at Carolina Mason University, and she was a law state player under Rob, under these three, her last two years in high school. So it's something I totally believe in. I believe that you will have a new business in this area that is going to be very competitive with the other ones. Within a two-mile radius, you have momentum, you have CVA, you have front range, and 303. So this would very much fit, you know, the demographics for putting another volleyball facility. They're going to own their facility. There are only two other ones in the state that own. One is in, up in Loveland, which is northern, what's it called, northern, northern Colorado, and then the other one is in Monument, which is Colorado Juniors. So this is, I think, one of the best projects I've ever been involved in in my 25 years of doing construction and construction management, and I think they'll be highly successful, and you'll be very happy to have them within this area.
Questions?
I do have a question regarding the parking. Can you tell me what the term of your contract is lengthwise with the Rappahoe Library District?
Lengthwise, do you remember that offhand? Do you have that agreement?
Essentially, it's, it's set up so that as long as, it can be renewable every three years, we're going to actually provide maintenance for the library, so on those parking days where we have to overflow, we, the agreement says that we will maintain, and that as long as the library's there, we will have that agreement.
Okay.
I do have a, I can send that to you.
Because, because I, I was curious not only what the initial term was, you represented that it's renewable, so the initial term is three years, renewable for another three years in perpetuity.
I'll specifically find out and follow up with you on the exact term of it.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
But it was something that we set up, and then after we had initial review, we had to revise it, actually, to maybe so it was more, so that you feel a lot more comfortable that it's not just for one year, and then then what happens? Well, that's not going to work, so we were from a long-term affair, because these guys are going to be here for a very long time. It, it needed to be where we could have it for 10, 15, 20 options.
Okay, thank you.
If you're running seven courts at a time, how many spectators are going to be there?
We only have six courts.
Well, even at that, how many spectators would, would be there?
I think it really kind of depends on what it is we're running, if it's a tournament, you know, there's typically four teams per court, so you've got...
We're in four courts, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we definitely wouldn't, let's move back up here a little bit. So the four across the top, we'd only be running the four, because the two on the bottom, we would use that for staging area, you know, because these kids are there from 8:00 AM to like 3:00, 4:00 PM, so we got food tables, stuff like that, room for them to hang out. So we'd at the most be running the four courts. There's four teams per court, there's 10 kids typically on a team, and then, you know, you figure one, typically, there's about one parent per each child there sometimes. I mean, it really depends, a lot of, a lot of parents, depends on the age, they drop them off and come back later, or they've got other kids to run around and stuff, so it's constant in and out flow.
Are there bleachers for spectators, or they're on the side someplace?
Yeah, we've got, in our current facility, we have portable bleachers, you know, they're what, like 15 feet long?
Rollaways.
Three tiers, rollaways, yeah.
So you're, you would use that here?
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to interject regarding the bleachers and the seating. On these Sundays, there's bleachers in there, but the parents bring chairs. And one of the concerns of a lot of these other facilities, and one of the reasons they want to do their own facilities, is the space between the courts and the sidelines, because if you've ever been to some of these events and they're too small, you sometimes have people sitting in chairs right next to the court. So from a safety aspect of it, when we looked at the design of the project, we wanted to make sure we had enough court space around the edges, in between the courts, so that we could accommodate chairs if that needed to be, but also makes it a lot safer for the girls when they're playing.
So the, the, most of the building will be metal, is that what you said?
Yeah, it's masonry, we've got about 14 feet of masonry block, a smooth, smooth face or split face blocks, we haven't completely decided that yet, then it's pre-engineered metal building.
I'm curious, are, are these tournaments, do they get loud? Will the sound be muffled inside your building?
It gets loud, it does, it does get loud, it gets loud in there, and, and sometimes you get a couple courts going at the same time, so it, it varies, it really does vary.
So you have a lot of people coming and going?
Yeah.
For the classes, and then when you have a tournament, it goes all day?
Yeah, it starts in the morning, and mostly runs to like 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, and they get eliminated. So, so, so they start to flow out, and then usually, at the very end, you have two courts and the two final teams will, will play on those courts.
I, I think the one thing to, to think about is, when we, during the week, most of the time, we are running practices, but kids are obviously in school, so our business starts when everybody else is leaving. So the area itself, you know, like where we're at now, there is no other business that, that is working during our working hours, so we're rolling, you know, typically from 5:00 till 10:00 o'clock at night. It's only that Sunday, Sundays where we will have people coming in, say, early in late, so that's the one and only time we've really seen, we don't even have a parking issue where we currently are now, we might have 50 total spaces. Parents drop them off for practice, because they don't stick around and watch the kids play practice, so it's really only that one day, but once again, they play at different times, so there might be two courts going, and then we have people sitting and watching, and so those other people are whatever, eating lunch, and then they come back, and those teams are done, so there's a lot of flip-flop. We haven't run into any parking issues yet, and I, I'm hoping, I can't imagine we would now with the, the library working with us as well.
Well, the library district seems to have been quite helpful.
Very helpful, we're blessed to have them involved, yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, we appreciate your time.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing regarding Elevations Volleyball, and we have two people that have signed up, Bob Smith?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me see.
I'm James.
And Amber?
I, I signed up.
I think she says yes, too.
You may come speak and support if you wish.
Amber's actually the, the volunteer for the project.
Okay.
I'm here for questions.
Okay, very good. Does anybody else wish to speak to the Elevations Volleyball proposal?
Staff would, would like to add a condition, entertain that for, to provide, the applicant provide us with a signed copy of the parking agreement with the library district.
To, to note the parking agreement with the library?
Yeah, to provide us the signed copy, that's all, yeah.
Very good. Does anybody else wish to speak? And then we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission. Any other questions or considerations? Anybody wish to make a motion or not?
Sir?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown.
In the case of P17-019, Elevations Volleyball Specific Development Plan, the planning commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments. They have listened to the application's presentation and public comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to conditions 1 through 5 in the staff report, and a new condition that says they need to supply the signed agreement with the library, or the parking agreement.
Very good, so there's...
Second.
Motion, I assume, rebel, and seconded, um, I'm, I'm, Mrs. Womack, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? No, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is item number two, which is case number L17-008, the farm at Rappahoe County, location and extent. And Cat Hammer will represent the county.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cat Hammer, planner at the Public Works Department over at Rappahoe County. I want to start out by saying the county attorney has reviewed the noticing and posting documents and requirements, and has determined the requirements have been met for this case, and jurisdiction is in place to make a decision on this case. The case before you tonight is L17-008, the farm at Rappahoe County, a location and extent amendment number one. The farm at Rappahoe County is located at 6461 South Waco Street, northwest corner of East Rappahoe and South Waco Street. The farm is completely surrounded by a residential planned, single-family development. The location, the original location and extent establishing the park was approved by the planning commission on June 19th in 2001. The applicant, on behalf of the owner, Goodman Metro District, has applied for approval of a location extent amendment for an existing 9.34 acre park. This application proposes to construct the following: two pickleball courts, a half-basketball court, plumbing, plumbed restrooms, three water quality facilities, two concrete seating areas, additional pedestrian lighting, and landscaping. The additional park amenities, if approved, will accompany the existing tennis courts, basketball courts, playground area, and gazebos. Staff has reviewed this application and have visited the site and reviewed the plan, supporting documentation and referral comments, and finds that, based on the review of the policies and goals as set forth in the comprehensive plan, the staff is giving a positive recommendation for approval of case number L17-008, the farm at Rappahoe County, location and extent amendment number one. I stand for any questions, and the applicant as well is here to introduce the project. She has asked that I pass out these renderings of the park.
Hi, I'm Luisa Andemigas Weller with the Architira Group, rare landscape architects, that were hired by Goodman Metro District to design this park improvement project. Cat did a great job kind of summarizing what's happening out there in the park. This is really phase one of some renovations for Central Park, the biggest park in the farm at Rappahoe County. The Goodman Metro District conducted a pretty thorough public process, it included public meetings and a resident survey, and a lot of these elements are from that process. So we've added, like Cat said, a basketball, a half-basketball court to accompany the existing full basketball court, two pickleball courts, and then there's park improvements that also include drainage improvements, because there's currently some drainage issues around the tennis courts. So the improved drainage will help increase the lifespan of a lot of these new elements. I think that's really it. Can I answer any questions about the design or the park itself?
I have some questions about the lighting.
Sure.
I can't recall, I live in an adjacent community, and I can't recall whether there is a time of the evening when the lights go out for the recreation facilities, so can you speak to that a little bit?
So, but right now, this park is lit for the parking lot, the existing parking lot has lights along it. We've added a couple more fixtures, mostly just for security, so it's certainly not a lit court, they're not meant to be played at night using those lights. They do, they do stay on all night, I believe, is that right? Yes, they do stay on all night.
Are they dimmed at all during?
They're LED lights, and they're actually specially designed to have mostly a down-pass light. So there are homes that, that are near this, but it, we did do a photometric plan, and we've kind of looked at where the light is happening, and we shouldn't have any pollution into nearby homes from that.
Okay, you indicated that you had spoke, you spoke with the residents about the expansion of the recreation area within the park?
There was a, a community-wide...
Right, were you in attendance at that meeting?
That's the last one.
Were you there at the last one? Because I was just curious whether any of the residents that live close by, because there are houses that, that face onto that, raised any issues regarding, regarding the lighting?
Not, not any of the meetings I've went to, no, and we did send out the, the letter, the notification letters as part of this to all of those people, and we haven't heard anything.
Okay, great, I wanted to double check on that, thank you.
Staff didn't hear anything regarding lighting.
From residents as well, either.
Okay, so the homeowners did have input into what, the pickleball courts, I mean, they approved of that use?
Yes.
They had a chance to assess lighting as well, then?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We will now open the public...
Can I sign up on the seat here, if I might?
Okay, we will open the public hearing regarding the farm at Rappahoe County, LNE, subject is L17-008, and we have two people that have signed in, Luisa Andemigas Weller, already spoken, and Joseph Semenaro. Would you like to come forward and make comments?
I'm not going to make any comments, but I do have one question.
But come forward, please, and, and state your name and address.
Joe Semenaro, 6453 South Telluride Street. So the meetings that we go to, I went to the public forums, the question is, aren't there notes from those forums? Because I kind of disagree with the comments that you just heard about people not being opposed to the restrooms. So there were public comments, there were a lot of people there, and people were opposed to this improvement, and I'd like to reference the notes, if they keep meeting notes for those. So it's not my word, it's official notes.
Okay, you want to, you want to summarize what you heard at that meeting?
Uh, there's, uh, let's see, summarize, there was concerns about vandalism. Last year, we had about $9,000 in vandalism, and the concern was it's going to increase with the structure like that. Uh, let's see, what else was there? Concern about the lighting and the increased traffic also, so...
Hey, do you live close?
Uh, yes, I do.
How far is your home from the proposed?
Uh, maybe 100 yards, something like that. So, yeah, so there were good turnout, and I'd say most of the people there were, from my perspective, opposed, so I think the perspective you're getting is a little different than the perspective I got at those meetings.
And that is the biggest park in the farm?
Uh, yes, it is.
I mean, I looked at the blue earth, and it is, you have...
Yeah, I also came here, I didn't expect this, I was told it's a done deal, I was told it was already approved, that's why I wish we had notes from the meetings, because I think some things are occurring that are not considered... occurring that are not consistent with what I'm finding out when I come to hearings like this, so...
Well, we appreciate your coming.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Uh, no, that's about it, so...
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will, if there's nobody else that wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for consideration.
Well, I thought this was the slam night, too.
Well, I'm hearing something else.
I am, too.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes, do your applicant have any comments in response? Please state your name and address. Thank you very much.
You bet. Clint Waldron, General Counsel, Suburban Metropolitan District, address two one five forward, East Commons Avenue, Centennial, Colorado. Um, this process has been going on for about four to five years. We started this overview, we've gone through two different architects to plan this park. This park design has been submitted, um, various times to an email blast. We, we gathered all the, um, email addresses from all the residents and blasted us out. We posted on a Facebook site, and we have not received any of the concerns that were expressed tonight. As far as vandalism, we have a very similar restroom we built a year and a half ago. There's been no vandalism today. Also, there's a misrepresentation. I managed the parks for a while, but when we're finding a new manager, there's been very little vandalism. There were some trash cans that were vandalized, about fifteen hundred dollars, that happened over three years ago. So there's not been this ground soil vandalism, ten thousand dollars, that is just a misrepresentation of what's going on out there. There were some concerns addressed at the public meetings. As you can imagine, this is a very large community, there's sixteen hundred and four units. No one in that community is going to agree upon what should be the best use of this park. There were also a lot of comments about, should we build a pool or not? And so a lot of this comments surrounded the pool. As far as this park, when we redesigned the park through Architerra, Smith's Plan Out, we received no comments today regarding parking, lights, or vandalism. There were some comments made at some of the previous meetings about vandalism, and we now have history with the exact same restroom we have in Creekside Park, which was approved by this board and by the county commissioners. We've had zero vandalism, zero complaints from the Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office, nothing has occurred. And again, this lighting is partly requested the Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office. When we have talked to them, they want security lighting. This park's designed so a sheriff's department officer can drive by and look in the park and not see, you know, just see black darkness. It's, it's, a lot of the residents out there, too, they're elderly, they like to walk early in the morning and late in the evenings. So we want to design a park that wasn't just for a, a certain subset of the community, that if folks want to get up early and walk their dog, they can certainly do that in a safe environment, where they could see if there was ice on the trail or whatnot. So that's what this, this lighting was designed to do. Uh, the residents right across the road on Peak View, they're the closest to it. Telluride is not, Peak View is, and no residents of Peak View expressed any concern about lighting, about the use of the pickleball courts, uh, or the expansion of the basketball courts. The other thing to say is, most of this park is there. This is not like we're taking a raw development and just building all these improvements. The only thing is, this small expansion to the basketball court, the basketball court is existing, and the pickleball courts, and two lights, and then the restroom, which right now is a porta potty. The porta potty, when we went through these public forums, was viewed as worse off because we had a lot of, you know, not vandalism, but kids wanting to have fun, they took the porta potty over. And the residents felt like, you know, if I have kids, which I do, and you go use the park, that's not the very sanitary place you want to take your kids to, you know, have them use the restroom. The other thing is that restroom doesn't provide a place for a baby changing station. So if you have young infants, you go to the restroom, there's nothing there. So based upon the feedback received for Central Park and the feedback received for Creekside Park, the restroom, shade, and additional amenities were the top priorities that the residents expressed to us through the survey process and through continuing public comment. So I, I think, you know, the representations you heard from the resident aren't exactly what has occurred, and that's not the history the Goodman Project has seen for, you know, for the last twenty years of the park. Have her answer any questions, any of the commissioners have?
Okay, so was this plan, when you started everything in two thousand and one, I think you got your original approval?
Yes.
Was it stated from the very beginning that there would be addition, or did the people want to take...
No, so this, so, so this came out of a process. The parks were aging, so they were getting, I think they were built in the two thousand and one, and now, you know, they're fifteen years old. So the question to the community was, what do you want to do? Would you rather just, you know, take up a playground equipment, new playground equipment in, or would you rather additional amenities provided as part of this process? So the playground, you know, starting to rot, starting to get old. So surveys went out, and that started the community process. There were two or three community meetings sent out to everybody. Um, a lot of us attended, and through that input, the residents overwhelmingly said, you know, we like what we have, we want to start over, but we would like additional amenities. And here's, we have a survey we sent out that shows, you know, kind of ranking what it is you would like and not like, what you liked about the park currently and not like. So it wasn't like two thousand and one plan, uh, but it was, you know, started, you know, four or five years ago about the planning process. The other thing is, this park has gone through, this park is the subject of an Arapahoe County Open Space Grant. This has gone through the whole open space, public process as well, it was awarded a grant. So it's not like this thing is all of a sudden just coming out of the, out of the dirt. This thing's been on, in the planning process for over four years. Uh, it's taken a while to get started, but the grant was awarded a year ago, does that sound right? A year ago.
How much of a grant did you get from them?
Three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. The total park project is one point two, one point two million dollars.
Okay, so the park users are part of it, at the special district?
The special district applied for the grant, the special district is paying for the rest of the, the cost that are outside the grant, exactly.
Did you happen to bring the, the survey with you?
Uh, uh...
Do you have any statistics from the survey that say the people wanted the pickleball court?
I unfortunately do, do not have that with me tonight.
You said there were sixteen hundred homes?
Sixteen hundred and four units.
And how many public meetings were there?
Um, if I, you know, starting from beginning, there's probably been, I'd say, six public meetings.
Over a period of three years, did you say?
About four years. The other thing is, this has been, the board meets, you know, generally five or six times a year. This has been on agenda, so outside the public process, where the only thing we focus on is, let's talk about the park and some improvements and what the community wants. This has been on the agenda for the past three years, just at a public meeting where we say, what's the status of the park, how are permits going? And, and, you know, there's been some conversation about the restrooms and how big to make it, and should have a water fountain attached, but there's not been public coming to those meetings saying, look, I saw it on agenda, and I don't like the park, and here's why. That just has not occurred. And this is the first that we're kind of hearing of these concerns with the park. I know that, you know, um, this gentleman has been at a public hearing, he and his wife have been there, and they've talked about some of these concerns, but not about, you know, third traffic was, was an issue. So the original plan was, this road would punch through the peak view. So that, so we looked at, redesigned and said, let's not punch through the peak view, let's just put, put another amenity there, so the traffic's isolated to this particular area. Uh, and again, there was a concern with Creekside Park, that, you know, there's a brand-new, you know, million-dollar playground out there, should be all this traffic. Again, that hasn't, that hasn't occurred. Are there outside residents who uses? Exactly, we want people to come and use the park, but there hasn't been all this traffic that the residents, you know, haven't been able to use this amenity for which they're partly paying for.
I just, um, we have a neighbor, for someone who lives in the neighborhood, that tells us a story that's here, and I hear your story over, over here, and I'm, I'm not quite sure what to make of all this.
Well, I guess you look at, you look at the representation that was made tonight, just if you want to look at, you know, what was said. Vandalism's been ten thousand dollars. I've had a budget with me that shows vandalism of fifteen hundred dollars, so that is a flat-out misrepresentation, because we do the budgeting with the accountant. There's not been that much vandalism, so I would ask the gentleman to come forth and say, what vandalism has occurred that's ten thousand dollars? It just hasn't, hasn't occurred.
I think the lighting, it, the fact that, you know...
The, the lighting is presently there. There are two, there are, there are six lights.
That, that there, you basically told us there were almost no concerns, but yet I don't see a...
You know, and, and again, I would, I would say the, the lighting's there, there's two additional lights that are downcast. The other thing is, if you look at any of these communities, sixteen hundred residents, it is very hard to say everybody agrees this plan. So there are people that disagree with part of it, absolutely. But the overwhelming majority has, have approved and like this plan, and it has been the planning process for four years. I mean, there was no concerns at, when we went to Arapahoe County for the grant process. We did a community survey, we submitted our documentation, and there was none of these concerns expressed when we went for the grant for the three hundred thousand dollars. It just, they've never materialized.
Am I allowed to come forward again?
I, I have one more question, sir. Um, are, no, I have one more question for, for the attorney for the Metro District. So Creekside Park had restroom facilities. Are those locked at any point in the evening?
So it, it also had a porta potty. Was part of the process that we went through for that park, which is the same process, we installed the restrooms, they have magnetic locks on them, so at ten PM they lock, there's a, there's a release button inside, and they open back up at six o'clock in the morning.
Right, yeah. I mean, that, that would, that would be a concern to me if I were a resident...
Right.
...of, of the farm, knowing that it doesn't become problematic to have those restrooms open all night. And again, for the public safety reasons, you pointed out that the sheriff wanted a certain amount of light.
And so the other thing that was installed on that restroom, which is the same plan, is there's a small light, kind of a security lighting.
Right.
If they were to drive through, they can look at the restroom and say, is any, you know, shenanigans going on, or is it look like it's safe? Certainly, we're, we're mindful of that, and that does occur right now. I mean, we've had landscapers go out there, and there are, you know, people in the bushes doing whatever they do in the bushes, and it's many concerns. This is hopefully to increase the safety of the park, because it is rather dark. I mean, there are parking lot lights, but there's no lighting on that, that further side where the tennis courts and the, um, the pickleball courts are planned, yeah.
I just didn't know, I was trying to envision, as I said, I live in the adjacent community, and I was trying to envision how much more additional light with the lights that were added, added would be kind of a broader scope of the lighting. I understand they're downward facing, you don't want to cause light pollution, and I understand that for safety reasons, as well as keeping vandalism down, you definitely want a lighted area. Um, I was just concerned that perhaps the neighbors who lived along that street were getting light pollution into their homes.
And I would say it doesn't go that far. So we, we were at this planning commission hearing for Creekside Park, you know, a few years ago. These same lights were installed in Creekside that's actually closer to the homes, and a couple of the homeowners came to this meeting, and they have had, I've talked, and there's no concerns. That light does not go past probably the breadth of this room. It is very downcast, it doesn't, you know, shine over, it's a flathead LED that shines, you know, pretty small focus. So I don't think these homeowners had any concerns, it's not in their yards, in their, you know, a hundred yards away from, from Creekside. And we haven't had anybody say, can you turn the lights off, can turn them down, because it's bothering us tonight? And there's actually one neighbor that lives fifty feet from that park, and he has had no concern to lighting on that as well. Because, yeah, you hear lighting, and you have all these, usually what lighting looks like, but if you drive by Creekside Park and see what was installed, I mean, it's per a photometric plan to make sure that it doesn't have that. Certainly, that's not the intent, is to, you know, have this nuisance factor for residents. I mean, they're taxpayers, they're paying the right, you want to do what's right by them, um, and make sure it is safe and secure, and, you know, we don't have other issues that come up from unlit areas.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Am I allowed to come back up? Okay. Am I allowed to come back up?
I closed the public hearing. No, not at this time. Thank you. Okay, back to the planning commission for final consideration.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
In the case of L one seven dash zero zero eight, The Farm at Arapahoe County, Location and Extent Amendment Number One, the planning commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the public hea- hearing. I hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to condition number one.
Do we have a second? Mr. Bremel seconds the motion. Um, I think we should take a voice, voice, vote on this.
Mr. Bremel?
Yes.
Mr. Chapin?
Could you come back to me in a minute?
Last, this is Ashton. Commissioner Wollman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rick?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sondland?
Yes.
Mr. Chapin?
No.
The motion passes. Five to two, four to two. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the final case for the evening is item number three, case number LE eighteen dash zero zero four, Lowry Ridge Storage Pond, LNE. Do you want to...
Three parks in my community.
Do you have a room?
Yeah, we have a room. We have a share, and maybe it's a extension to the age. So we're using it for...
We have three parks.
Yeah, we all met with...
Yeah, we, well, not for, not for our parks, I'm only...
Oh, yeah?
Right. We have a metro district, but we need, that runs down Walter Road, from our area. Yeah. They, this development is so large, the time you've been there, that they needed to have that metro district because of the size. And, and really, it's, it's actually, it's lovely, and, and they share schools there, the HSG schools. So there's a general, you know, large expansion of public space that the community makes a lot of these people really like, and they love. And, and the work they do, actually, will be...
How many acres do you, are you, are you taking?
Oh, one hours, I can't even imagine. We have, we own a lot of our own areas, you know? We own a lot of...
You must pay a lot for landscaping.
We do. We do.
And water?
We pay probably almost a hundred thousand dollars for landscaping, and our water is a thousand, a hundred thousand, not more, more than that.
How many do we shake out?
Uh, three hundred and sixty-three.
Wow.
We pay a lot.
That's a lot.
We own a lot of land, and we pay a lot for water and landscaping.
Not that many houses.
No. Yeah, it is, it really affects the space.
Can we go down to open space, where we decided to open space?
That has a way.
If you want to get on that roof.
Oh, God, that hailstorm yesterday, we had more damage from the hailstorm yesterday. Yeah. We didn't even, the adjuster hasn't even come with a second adjuster yet to hike up on the roof with safety gear. They missed two, they, they didn't show up Monday when they were supposed to, they didn't show up today. So I had to call my...
Didn't call?
Didn't call.
You, you have still...
No, Joe, well, Joe is, wants to call, so he's there, but still, I mean, you know, he can't leave to go do some...
Because you think I'm coming?
Yeah, so I'm going to have to call my insurance agent. But you know what, this, you guys need to get your ass together, because you start to, to start there. And frankly, I don't think they really want to disturb me, just... And frankly, I don't think they really want to disturb me at this point. Because if I'm, at this point, it's not going to help for, for them, don't, don't mind. I need to.
If she always make. Give you a call. That's what I think. That's what I think.
I would, I think, I think that's definitely. Because for each of them, it's a.
Of course. It would be a nice.
And it's all right, it's all right.
And it would be a nice part of the presentation to be able to say. No, but.
Right, right. And, and it's unfortunate that I thought it could just.
The next one?
Yeah.
Let's say that one's on air. But I'm used to that anyway. You know, from the little city that Kenny all and Austin rejected to be. Three, three and a half years ago.
Okay. Okay, well now, address item number three. Lowry Storage Pond.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. Molly Rickfield Larson, senior planner with the Public Works Department. The attorney has reviewed the public notice and has determined that the applicant has met all the notice requirements there by establishing jurisdiction. What's before you this evening is Lowry Ridge Storage Pond, location and extent. The applicant is Range View Metropolitan District. The subject site is located south of East Quincy Avenue, across from the Apogee Office Park, which is formerly known as the East Energy Park, and situated within a 19-acre easement created by an agreement between the district and the state land board, who is the property owner. This application proposes to construct a six-acre water storage pond to serve the client's, um, the district's clients. And this pond is the first phase of the water treatment facility, 1041, that was approved last year by you and the Board of County Commissioners. Staff recommends this application be approved on the findings of the staff report, and that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Um, I think there was a, a note about the existing transmission lines from XL Energy, were, were they ever noted on the?
No, that's a condition that they, um, put that on the site.
Put that on?
Yeah, that they were to address their, their concerns.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it says here, there will be no, lighting is not needed
Right.
for the pond.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, the applicant has a PowerPoint presentation. I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good, thank you, Molly. Good evening, planning commission. My name is Brent Fuller. I'm an engineer at Pure Cycle Corporation. Tonight I'm representing Range View and their location, and I'll be presenting their location and extent application, the Lowry Ridge Storage Pond. Range View is, um, been planning and in the beginning, a client phase for a water treatment facility complex, which is located near Watkins Road and Quincy Avenue. As part of that water treatment facility complex, Range View is proposing the Lowry Ridge Storage Pond, which is what we'll concentrate on tonight, um, and what we're asking for location extent approval for. Like Molly mentioned, it's already, uh, these facilities have been approved in the 1041 permit application process by the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, the facility will be owned and operated by Range View Metropolitan District. It will be built on, um, a 19.3 acre site owned by, uh, the Colorado State Land Board. Um, Range View has an easement agreement for the, that 19.3 acre site, um, to build and operate that water treatment facility complex. Uh, the Lowry Ridge Storage Pond has been, uh, reviewed and already approved by the Colorado Division of Water Resources, um, for construction as well. Here's a aerial image of the storage pond, um, which again is the first phase of construction for the water treatment facility complex. On that dash line is a 19.3 acre easement. Um, and I've also included some, uh, other structures surrounding the pond, which represent different water treatment structures and storage tanks that will have to be further designed, um, and approved, um, following the storage pond project. The pond size is six acres, um, and we will both pump water into the pond, um, and suck water out of the pond through a 16-inch proposed line, um, on the top of the pond there, that then tees into an existing 10-inch groundwater line that runs east and west along Quincy Avenue. Um, for accessing the site, um, you'll use Quincy Avenue, turn south onto a 20-foot paved private road, and then turn west, um, into the site, um, on a proposed 15-foot aggregate access drive that surrounds the perimeter of the pond, uh, which is denoted by that big black line in the image. Um, we'll also construct a perimeter fence around the pond, um, for security concerns and to keep wildlife from entering the pond. Let me add a little bit further. You can see, um, the location, um, in terms of Aurora, uh, for reference. Um, the bottom, on the bottom center of the image is the Aurora Reservoir, so we're a few miles, um, to the north and the east of the reservoir. Um, the purpose of the pond is both, um, for storage and, um, to mix, uh, gra, our, our different water sources. So we'll take groundwater from our groundwater supply wells, um, and our purchased Wise Water, and flow that up into the pond, and then mix it with our different surface water sources in the pond. Then we'll have a blended water with one, um, type of water quality parameter that will then treat in the water treatment, uh, facility complex on site. Um, and then we will send that, um, then potable drinking water through our transmission lines to Sky Ranch. Sky Ranch has potable, uh, distribution system, and so using that potable water for our residential and commercial, um, customers. Also, as part of this presentation, I just wanted to show some images, um, of some existing storage ponds that are very similar in scope. Uh, these are line ponds, um, that would be very similar, but this Lowry Ridge Storage Pond, that Range View Metropolitan District has, um, previously designed, constructed, and now operates. Um, so that's Sky Ranch Pond on the left, and the Coal Creek Storage Pond on the right, which is located east of Dad's landfill. With that, I just want to thank, um, Arapahoe County staff, Molly, Workover Larson, and Kurt Klein for their help with the, uh, this application. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Are these ponds collectively going to supply all the water for Sky Ranch?
No, so the, um, the two previous ponds are not for potable water use. This is, it's, because it's located at a high point of, of the property, it's about 6,000 feet. It's a very unique site, so we, once it gets to the pond, we don't have to pump it anywhere. We'll use that water treatment facility primarily for all of the Sky Ranch development.
And how far is it from this pond up to Sky Ranch?
Um, it's seven miles north and about, the, the line will be about one mile to the west. So that's all shaped that I showed on that previous.
Okay, so if you don't have this pond, that there's no water for the Sky Ranch?
Well, it'll be very limited, so the, um, about a year ago, I went through this process for the water supply facility, which is just a pump station and tank, and that was, that's only for our first phase, or our first filing, which is under construction right now. If we want to provide continued water to Sky Ranch, we would need this, uh, expanded water treatment facility for future growth.
Okay, and when is the remainder to be developed?
It depends on the, um, the timing of home development, commercial growth in Sky Ranch. So obviously, we'll need to build this and expand this before future development occurs. So we're good with filing one and into filing two, but as that continued growth occurs, we'll need to expand the water treatment facility.
Okay.
This is the first step.
And how far underground will that pipe be?
Yep.
For north?
Yep, so the, the existing pipeline, uh, that ran east-west along Quincy Avenue is typically, um, uh, we have five feet to the top of the pipe. Uh, this will be a little lower because it's coming from the bottom of the pond, and then we'll route it up to tie into that, that elevation for the existing line.
Mr. Bremel?
How, how deep is the pond going to be?
It is going to be, we're going about 10 feet down from existing grid, and then we'll use some of that soil to berm up 10 feet, so about 20 feet.
And how tall's it, it's going to be around it?
Um, we, our, our existing, um, fences are about six or seven feet. I went out to the Sky Ranch Pond today to check it out, and it's, it's about this high, so seven or so feet.
Do you have any trouble with animals getting into it?
We have not. I think we've had, um, one bird or something that died in the pond. And we, as one of the conditions of approval, we have to put traction down on the sides of, if any animal did fall and it could climb its way up.
How many houses, um, were contemplated for phase one?
It's 504.
Okay, and then fully built out, if that were to pass?
I think it's about, around 4,000.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. We will open the public hearing for the Lowry Ridge Storage Pond, LNE. Anybody here wish to speak? Is there anybody who signed in? Thank you. Nobody signed in, but you may come forward and speak, even if you haven't signed in. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And then, any other questions or comments or concerns? Or not? Or not? Anybody wish to move forward and make a motion? Or not?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Very good, thank you so much.
In the case of LE-18-004, Lowry Ridge Storage Pond, location and extent. I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comment as presented at the hearing. hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to conditions one through five.
Do we have a second for the motion made by Mrs. Moonman?
All second.
Mr. Chapin seconds the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And that means our meeting to a close unless there are any announcements. Or not?
Jason Reynolds, current planning manager. Uh, just wanted to announce that we do have a new planner starting, uh, next week, Monday. Very excited about, uh, having this person join our team. Uh, moved here, uh, from Ann Arbor, Michigan, uh, just finished up, uh, masters at the University of Michigan. So we'll be here, uh, on Monday, and perhaps at a future planning commission meeting.
Is that an addition, or is somebody else's left?
Uh, Amy Carr, you may recall her. She was with us for about eight months and took a job in more of, uh, emergency preparedness planning, which is, you know, something she's really passionate about, so. I don't begrudge her that opportunity, uh, just sad that we, we lost her, but glad we'll be having someone, uh, to replace her next week. And I also have a copy of Planning Magazine for Commissioner Chapin.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. I'm going to first fix you, I support.
There's a, there's a cool article in there about, uh, retail.
All right.
Public business journals. Yeah.
And retail is getting innovative. All right, we're done. I'm going to write it down. I know, I'm just going to go get this trash. I can give attention. Yeah. I should be taking this call.
Oh, yeah, that's it.